Please say rokko.
Mrs. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Bembo?
Here.
Mrs. Head?
Here.
Mrs. Rayal?
Here.
Mrs. Medina?
Here.
Mr. Krings?
Here.
Okay, next we'll move on to our student representative report. Everybody have four seconds.
Okay, so the main focus right now is homecoming. The homecoming game is on October 4th. It is Raiders Strike Year, which is the pink game. The Badger Band is coming and it's also Hall of Fame Duckies that night. The dance is October 5th. Right now for that is the main focus is nominations and electing court. Theme is the roaring twenties. Our dress up days for homecoming week. On Monday is class color. Tuesday is camouflage blaze orange. Wednesday is jersey day. Thursday is neon day and then Friday is rabbits pride slash pink for this quarter. Team leadership with the Encouraged Foundation, their first meeting is September 18th and that is sophomores that are part of that group. On Tuesday, September 24th, we're having a guest speaker Keith Nor come in. In the morning, he's doing an assembly that's beginning to then entire LHS team body. In the afternoon is a leadership training session with select students from LHS and area schools. And then in the evening at 7:00 PM, he's meeting two parents in the cafeteria later. And then on Wednesday, September 25th is the WBC sportsmanship summit where Keith Nor is also speaking.
Thanks Emily. Welcome back to school. Your senior year, if it goes well. Next we have minutes.
Okay, I would make a motion that approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes of August 12th and the special Board of Education meeting closed session of August 11th.
Motion is second to approve the regular Board of Education meeting minutes from August 12th and the special Board of Education closed session meeting in August 5th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close to that. Okay, next, Green, do we have any comments from the public?
No.
Okay, move into our committee reports. I guess Business Service Committee actually did not hold a meeting. We did not have a forum there. We only had one consent agenda item that's in meetings tonight. So that report doesn't really need to be given. Do we need to approve the minutes? There is no minutes. Okay.
Meeting no minutes.
Meeting no minutes. Move on to Personnel Services.
Personnel Services met September 3rd. And from that meeting, we have nine consent agenda items and the order is follows. The committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff early retirement request effective August 30th, 2013. Second, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two professional staff resignations. Three, the committee recommends and I move to approve the one support staff resignation request effective September 6th, 2013. Fourth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the five professional staff appointments which were effective August 27th, 2013. Fifth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two non-union, non-certified support staff appointments effective August 26th, 2013. Sixth, the committee recommends and I move to approve the two support staff appointments. And under policy review, the committee recommends and I move to approve policy 365.1 rule for second reading and the deletion of policy 365.1 exhibit one. Second, whoa, we got no more. Sorry. Eight.
You've been paused.
Oh. Eight, the committee recommends and I move to approve a wage increase for the dispersment manager to be increased to the same hourly wage rate as the payroll manager, which is currently 2360 per hour effective August 30th, 2013. And the ninth one, the last one, the committee recommends and I move to approve the supplemental wage increase for the director of curriculum secretary for current total wage of 18, 19 per hour effective August 30th, 2013. No.
Wait.
Yes.
I did one question on PS eight.
PS eight, yes.
Spurtsman manager, payroll manager, what's the difference?
Are we two different people?
Yes.
Two different people?
Anybody want anything else?
I'll second.
Okay, there's motion is second to approve PS one through PS nine. We have all of them, please do two, eight, nine mean wage increases.
Mr. Bembo?
Yeah.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
With that, I move that the minutes from the September 3rd committee meeting be approved as printed. I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the meeting minutes from the September 3rd Personnel Services Committee meeting. Please in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And then I move to approve the Personnel Services Committee meeting to two closed sessions on August 6th. I'll second that.
Motion is second to approve the two closed session meeting minutes of August 6th. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Next we will move on to the Ed Services.
Okay, Ed Services Committee met on September 3rd at 6:31. We had no public comment. We had no consent agenda items, but we did have some updates. Our first update involved the ACT results and Ron Rasmussen, who was our principal, Lincoln, reviewed results of the ACT noting that Lincoln had a 64% participation rate compared to 49% in other Valley schools. Lincoln High School's composite score was 22.2% compared to 21.1 statewide. Overall, results were pleasing and the district will continue to work on math scores. We went on to summer professional development and Kathy Stevins hints, our Director of Curriculum and Instruction shared that many professional development opportunities were available during the summer and several staff participate in these opportunities. Throughout the summer, there were over 300 staff involved in courses and workshops, including Technology Star Math and Accelerated Math, Common Core Mapping in Language Arts and Science and RTI was skyboarded. It was noted that there were eight staff members involved in facilitating these opportunities. We moved on to district and school report cards and Kathy informed the Educational Services Committee that the district and school report cards for the 2012-13 school year were shared with school district personnel on Monday, August 12th, 2013 through a secure website. The results of the report cards are embargoed from the public until Tuesday, September 17th, 2013. On that date, the report card results will be released to the public. A full report about the 2012-13 WRPS district and school report cards will be shared with the Educational Services Committee on Monday, October 7th, 2013. With that, the committee recommends and I move that we accept the agenda for the minutes. The minutes are an Education Services Committee of September 3rd.
Okay, motion is second to approve the meeting minutes of the Ed Services Committee meeting on September 3rd. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
One question. Why do we get such more participation than we do at CTEs?
I was just gonna ask the same thing.
Why are there so much higher?
None of the Valley schools.
They're not participating.
Go ahead, Ryan.
I would add that it's probably a good, like, four or five years ago now already, we started offering the plan assessment at the sophomore level, which is basically the pre-ACT. And the suite of ACT exams are offered in sequence and it gives you data from, there's the explorer test, which is given either at eighth or ninth grade or some actually do it at both 10th grade would be the plan assessment and then junior year and up would be the ACT. And they work in concert with one another to provide longitudinal data on students' progress over that span of time. And I believe that our movement to offering the plan assessment to all sophomores really increased the exposure and understanding of the ACT test and has probably contributed to having a higher percentage. And beyond that, I think just the culture of the high school in Wisconsin Rapids is to promote all students to take that ACT just to give them a Snapchat view of where they stand and what their options are for post-secondary education options. So I think overall, it's just the, I think it's the culture of the school district and the building as a whole.
I also think, and we've sat a couple of meetings with the counselors, Joe, the counselors do a good job at encouraging the students to take the ACT and even if they don't think they're going to college, it does help in the textbooks too as far as making sure you're taking this testing and it shows that the initiative, as I explained, it shows the initiative to any registrar that's taking them, people that you're least interested in serious about getting graduation further. So I think you have a job of encouraging the students to apply.
Thank you. Okay, next we have agenda referrals or information requests. Okay, we can move on to our legislative agenda.
Okay, I do have something to share this month. I read the legislative update from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards that was published from the sixth and I thought this piece might be of some interest. I know a couple of you have asked about accountability for the voucher schools, how that's gonna work and there was a little article in here. So state news media have made much of the fact that a bill to bring all publicly funded schools in the state, including private voucher schools, into a stated accountability system was introduced with just four cosponsors out of 131 lawmakers. However, a fifth lawmaker told the Middleton Education Forum last night that he will ask this name be, that his name be added to the bill the next time the Senate meets in floor session and that will likely occur in less than two weeks as they're scheduled to meet September 17th through the 19th. He joins with fellow Republicans, this was Senator Dale Schultz from Richland Center, Senator Ruth Olson of Ripon, Representative Steve Castell of Park Lake, the chairs of the Senate and Assembly Education Committee and Representatives Gary Vies of Sister Bay and Al Ott of Forest Junction as sponsors of the legislation, which has been introduced as a separate bill in each house. A public hearing on the Senate version, which is Senate Bill 286, is set for next Thursday, September 12th. In the works for two years, the bill would require for the first time that private schools in the voucher program report a wide range of performance information in the state. Public schools included charters already provide the data. It would also give a score to every public charter and voucher school based on data collected during the 2014 academic year. The scores would be in five categories, reading and math, achievement and growth in those areas, college and career readiness, closing gaps in student achievement and graduation rates and student engagement. The bill would also create a series of consequences for schools that underperform three years in a row, including restructuring, closing, revocation of charter or removal from the voucher program. Governor Scott Walker, who took the initiative in 2011 to convene a task force to design an accountability system for all publicly funded schools in the state, including private voucher schools, has been marginally absent from the discussion so far. The support is seen as important to overcoming objections being raised by number one Republican lawmakers in the state Assembly Speaker Robin Ross. So.
Do we know? We don't. Are they gonna ask that? We just see how the voucher children are doing or is it the whole voucher school?
I don't. I think it's still a discussion.
Still a discussion.
Those who was the followers and contact the legislators.
And it is, yeah, Senate Bill 286 is for the Senate. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Green.
Okay, next we have bills.
Okay, I would make a motion that the receipts be ordered and the bills be paid as printed.
Clear.
Okay, motion is second that the bills be paid again for the month. Please have a roll call.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayal?
Yes.
Mrs. Head?
Yes.
Mr. Bembo?
Yes.
Mr. Krings?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Thank you, Green. Next we have under new business, discussion and possible action to approve changes to policy 443.8, weapons on school premises, policy 832, weapons on school premises, and adoption of a new recommended policy 522.9, possession or use of weapons, staff, employees all for second reading.
Basically, it's the way we bring new policy through. We discussed it last month and this would be the second reading for you to review, to have reviewed and come back with any other comments that you might have about those. The policies are for three different groups. One is for students, one is for staff, and then one is for any visitors or volunteers. So we broke it out, basically what we had was one policy and we broke it down into three to cover all three groups individually. And I would ask if there are any concerns, any other questions about those?
Discussed everything.
I just have, if you want to review them, I don't have them.
I have made a motion to approve the changes to policy 443.8, policy 832, policy 522.9 being stated for second reading.
Okay, motion is second to approve changes to policy 443.8, policy 832, and policy 522.9. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next we have discussion and possible action to approve 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement for Non-Resident Students Participating in Virtual Program.
Dan, you had information on 66.03 for a meeting last Monday.
Do you have any, but do you have any additions to that?
No.
There aren't any additions to that?
The other district is one.
It's one, it's one student and the other district has been contacted and has agreed to hold them, therefore for approving as well. A single 4K student from Adams Friendship School District.
That's a 4K. Yeah.
I'll agree what we had from the meeting. A virtual program operated by the district has attracted a number of students from school districts around the state. The DTI does not allow open enrollment to Wisconsin Rapids Virtual Program, although non-resident students are allowed from the program to provide. Resident school district agrees to a cooperative 66.031 agreement. Any additional cost to provide special educational services under each agreement remains the responsibility of the resident school district. So in this case, we have Adams Friendship asking to have one student, or a student in Adams, sorry, Friendship asking to come to our virtual 4K program.
Is that your motion?
I would like to make a motion to recommend the 66.03 Cooperative Agreement for Schools Attending the Virtual Board, Virtual Program from the Adams Friendship School District as listed, be recommended for approval.
Okay, motion is second to approve the 66.0301 Cooperative Agreement for Adams Friendship. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Okay, next discussion, discussion and possible action to approve the office clerical and aid support staff employing.
I think Ryan, if you wanna just touch on some of the highlights that you were planning to cover with the group.
The board has previously provided a draft copy of the employee handbook for our office clerical and aid support staff group. In addition to that, put out on the table for you this evening is an additional handout. It's kind of gray and covered with the note of five additional edits, adjustments that were made in the time since you received the initial draft. Those adjustments coming following legal counsel review of the draft handbook, that's, if you look at the, that's items one, two, four, and five. Number three, on that list, we first specifically to the weapons on school premises and property policy that you just approved. We did make an adjustment to that expecting that that policy change to go through. So the, in each one of these pages with this packet, you'll see highlighted in yellow the adjustments that were made since the initial draft you received about a week, week and a half ago. The page numbers, if you wanna do a comparison, should still match up with the initial draft that you received. So for example, you'll see the first page, page number seven, under the employee classifications, there was a carryover reference to a bargaining unit, that terminology being eliminated based on legal counsel recommendation to that terminology was not relevant to the handbook and not needed. The next adjustment, column page 21, made a reference to probationary period and legal counsel is recommending that, that in essence, that terminology is not necessary for the purposes of what we're reviewing in the handbook and this group as our employees, the board really does not need to restrict themselves to a set period of days as far as the employment status for that individual. Therefore, in essence, saying it's not necessary to be in there and really no advantage, if anything potentially disadvantage on having it in. I think we will continue to make reference to, in conjunction with wages, have what would be considered a preliminary period or a probationary period, but again, salary delineations and figures are not something that's included as part of the handbook. So again, it did not, legal counsel did not view that this was necessary to have in at all.
So can I ask a question? So what we're saying that just before with this probationary period, that kind of gave them, that kind of gave us the idea that after 90 days, they were kind of pretty secure in their position and what we're taking away is that security, right? I mean, after 90 days, they're still.
Well, previously with the collective bargaining agreement, that reference to the probationary period made sense because it gave that preliminary period of time before those rights kicked in and after eclipsed that number of days, you did have the full protection of what was included in that bargaining agreement. Not having all of those protections previously from a bargaining agreement in the handbook, it really almost in essence is not necessary or irrelevant. But in short, the answer to your question, yes, yeah. I mean, there's much more flexibility with job status, not having that collective bargaining agreement.
Is there anything that seemed to me that would be important to an employee to know even they have, they have relative approval and security? Is there anything to replace it?
Well, I think that is gonna come with the salary adjustment reference that I mentioned before. Previously, there was the employee earning an 85% rate of what the set wage was and after eclipsing that probationary period would go to the full rate. That's something that we still can, we plan to continue that practice. So that does in essence cover to a certain extent what you're referring to.
They also have a right to a grievance procedure. So should they be terminated at any time? They could.
They do have the right.
Oh, absolutely. Any employers. So that would be their recourse.
The next page ends what I was previously referring to on the board policy change that was, that's part of the agenda this evening. Eliminating the language that was in previous handbooks, that's what slashed out on page 26 and highlighted in yellow then. In short, the opening paragraph is the same paragraph that comes right out of the policy that was just approved. And then the second short paragraph just references the specific board policy for an individual to review for the full listing of all of those expectations and policy as outlined. I would, just as a kind of a side note, when we bring, moving forward and we're gonna continue to be in the process and need to constantly be updating all of our employee handbooks, we're gonna need to adjust this language in the previous handbooks that have already been approved. Next time we bring those forward for an update, we'll be looking to update this in all of our handbooks.
You said earlier that legal, legal people have given you an opinion. Is it an opinion that is balanced or is it an opinion that, you know, would be tilted toward management rights, et cetera? Opinion of the type of school?
That's, that would be accurate. Looking at the district as a whole.
I've heard some comments from people that are concerned about some things that, and it's nothing that is highlighted here tonight. One of the things that was brought up by somebody was that it seems that we're taking a lot away. It seems like every time we're taking more and more away and not really giving anything back. And there's a concern that, the topic that came up to me was the idea of a break. Maybe some, like the people who have typically had like a 15-minute, a 15-minute break in the morning and a break in the afternoon and now they're only allowed one break. Either morning, afternoon, or whatever, and that things have been taken away from them and they're just like, we're just keep chopping away, you know? And I see that we're doing it everywhere. I understand that it's just a sign of the times, but I'm kind of wondering about the security for these people that, I mean, are we just gonna keep chopping away? Is there any end to this?
Part of that, part of that break issue is that our teachers, as you know, are teaching six. They used to be available for supervision during that six period and they are no longer. And I know, Ryan, you've had conversations with the building principal at Lincoln with regards to break times and.
I would say from the building perspective, the previous allowance of break time is down. Probably the biggest issue of concern with this particular employee group. To the extent that we've, we've had positions that basically their job is to cover, to do relief for other employees' break times. It really in essence has boiled down to a budget issue. We have, we've reduced our clerical time by cutting back that break allowance.
Maybe what we need done is better communication because when I ask this person, do you understand why this is being done? No, no idea. They're just taking it away and like, and maybe they weren't paying attention well enough when this was all, maybe it wasn't explained clear, I don't know. But it's like they're seeing that something's being taken away and with no explanation whatsoever. It's just like across the board, everybody loses a break in the afternoon and that's it. And like they haven't really understood why.
And then that may well have been shared with leadership as well. Whether that filters down is beyond our control. You know, not moving down in the sense that it's from the higher ups, but I mean, as far as whether that information is shared out with our union membership, I don't know how they go about sharing that out because I know Ryan said like the conversations.
I had meetings with union leadership of this group regarding the handbook and I know what we meant, there were a few items. The last meeting we had is a follow-up that they had some questions on that they had raised and this is not one of those items that the leadership has raised with me.
I also know that you've done some communicating with the membership with regard to some of the changes that have come. But point taken, that we need to make sure they say why.
Yeah, exactly, why? Because this person said, we received this email saying, no more afternoon breaks and start right away and, you know, and according to that without explanation. There was no explanation given as to why they're not wanting to get in. And it was somebody who doesn't see the budget impact on it, maybe somebody like, say, a clerical person who doesn't need to be relieved, you know, doesn't have anybody substituting to comment with them.
And that is one of the challenges is that this is a very diverse group. I mean, it covers everything from cashiers on our lunch lines to year-round full-time staff here at Central Office. It's a very diverse group and to try to keep that as consistent as possible, you know, can, it creates a unique set of circumstances for certain individuals and not, it's not always easy for them to see the need and expectation for consistency within a handbook like this. But I do know that they're our whole position, there'd be additional people we would be hiring, would have been hiring this fall if this was not put in place, especially with the secondary teaching staff going to teaching six classes in our secondary buildings because we're utilizing our, our support staff more for supervision.
I was reading a couple articles about this, handbooks in many school districts are not printing them. They provide a new employee, print the copy and then any subsequent copies you find online. Are we doing that?
I was on one.
We're not gonna print, we're not continuing to print every time?
China, no, we're not.
I took it because it's possible. Printing costs. Then the second question I have is, is part of the handle, but do we still deduct those for employees? Payroll deduction?
That's not legal. At this point, I don't. We've got, it's gone back and forth.
As far as there's, the final two pages that have highlighted edits, it would be the next page in would came from page 30 in the draft. Legal counsel did indicate that there are, there are some laws guided. Legal council did indicate that there are, there are some laws guiding, giving guidelines on compensatory time. So indicated that it would be prudent for us to make that. Those five additional words at the end of the first sentence, you know, in accordance with applicable law. And finally then, just another editorial recommendation from legal council related to the approval process for voting holidays, just a reference that indicating that that is with supervisor approval. That time off being, shall be subject to approval by the supervisor.
Are there any other questions, questions, Ryan?
Are there pieces you want to reference or?
Not particularly. I mean, unless there were additional questions. I think the bulk of what you find within the handbook is coming from the previous two that have already been approved. So I know even with our legal council review, that was much quicker this time around because a lot of those pieces have previously been seen. But you know, again, we're going to constantly be reviewing that and adjustments are going to come along along the way. I guess one that did just pop in my mind that I think is important to make reference to is the fact that with the Pendy and Healthcare Reform Act going to be taking effect for employers, we know that that was supposed to be taking effect for employers in January 2014. That has been postponed a year. That has adjusted a little bit the recommendations that we brought forward to you as a board, giving us another year to kind of prepare for that. There are references within this handbook that do note in italics at the end, that appendix at the end that talks specifically about insurance benefits. There are italicized references to the fact that effective July 1, 2014, the allowance of those benefits are going to change, indicating that in conjunction with or accordance with the Healthcare Reform Act, that 30 hours, an average of 30 hours per week will be the cutoff, if you will, for the allowance of those health benefits. So I think, again, just getting the district prepared and ready to go in advance of that act coming along, so we're prepared for the following year. We're looking to get that going at the beginning of the fiscal year, on July 1, 2014, the fiscal year. And that would be the case for all, for all employees.
I guess this brings to mind a phrase I heard on death by a thousand small cuts and reduction of the quality and taking away slowly. The public doesn't see this and they don't know about it. They think it's just all right to keep doing this, but we can't keep doing this for too long or we're not going to be as good a school district in my opinion. There's stuff somewhere.
Well, one thing I discussed with Ryan was that in my time here, we have not had to cut an OPBA position. Now, we've had some that have gone by the wayside due to attrition. Somebody leaves and we either reorganize or pull an existing person and put them in, you know, in a position. So positions have been reduced, but people have not, we have not cut people. So that's the balance.
They used to be librarian, library and all those libraries scattered around. Same here for schools. I mean, that's a reduction in quality for sure. Similar things.
And that's been in place for, I don't know how long, at least eight, nine years, eight years. I remember that from seeing over there.
We did that when I was assistant director, so.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, no, you're right. We keep chipping away at that.
Well, and I think what we're chipping away at is the morale. And that's, that's what's concerning is that people, like, going back to the break issue, that wasn't an issue of like, it's, not that it's a great big issue, but it's just another little thing. You know, it's just another little thing that just lowers that morale. And I think that we have to be eternally grateful to our teachers who are taking on that system, you know, hour now that they're, they're doing this extra work and they've really been good about it. You know, we haven't heard any whine about it at all. And, you know, they have, they have a certain right to complain about. Again, we're asking people to do more and we're either not giving them more, giving them less to do it. And I mean, it's happening everywhere. It's not just here. It's not just even our city. It's, it's in the world, but it's, my concern is that the morale just keeps getting chipped away at little by little. I mean, I don't, I don't have a solution for that, but I think that's what we need to keep in mind.
Well, the other part of it is that this group, this is the first time this group was experiencing it because they've had a contract up until now. So previous, all the other previous groups that didn't have a contract have already felt Act 10's rap. And basically it goes back to Act 10. It's not like we're doing it, it's not like we're, we want to do it, but we have much of a choice. I mean, the bottom line is, if you don't do it, you're violating the law and/or you don't get the funds.
And that's where I think that the communication is important. We need to really clearly communicate why we have to do this, you know, and not why we want to do this or why we, you know, like we think this is great either. We don't want to own this either. But I think that if we could communicate and make sure that everybody understood the reasoning behind it, that, you know, maybe you don't see the impact, but your group is such, like you said, such a diverse group that everybody needs to understand it better. And if we could just maybe communicate better, wouldn't be seeing us quite such a hard hit.
I just wanted to make sure I understood that when you did this employee handbook, you did talk to the representative of this group of employees?
Yes, when we had a finalized working draft in place, it was presented to them and a couple of different meetings were held to go over that and address questions.
So their questions were addressed and we assumed, I guess, that they were going to relay this information to their general membership. Would that be their primary responsibility?
I don't know if I'm going to comment what their responsibility should be, but it would have been nice if that sort of communication.
Had taken place.
Had taken place or would take place.
So that if the general member of this group had a question, they should have called or asked their representative? Because that representative should have probably have the question.
They could have because the representative had the information.
Okay. And they could call you too.
We can also be communicating, so.
Still, still got to be cognitive that there are certain members that are not in their membership anymore. Those people are on their own, little island, because the membership groups are not going to be helping.
Well, we certainly don't think we're helping.
You know what those people are. So it's their responsibility to get that information then from Ryan or the school district board because if they're not.
Well, this is uncharted water too. I mean, we're navigating, we're just trying to get the handbooks out.
And there was a, there was a email sent out in July after the start of the new fiscal year. At that time, it was most specifically the email was giving information on the status of the personal days. And there was a reference in that email as well that actually was anticipated by the end of summer on the overall handbook. So, you know, I don't, off the top of my head, remember the full wording that I used in sending that email out, but I would, would hope, given the fact that email communication to the group began back in July, that if there were questions related to the status of any parts of the handbook, that there would have been contact with me. And there just really has been very minimal questions.
Unfortunately too, in this day and age, most of our communication is electronic. And, you know, you lose that face-to-face chance to think about a question that you might ask at the time that you're having a discussion, get the email, you just read it and move on to the next one. Fewer people to do the communicating and the people getting the communication don't often get back, just kind of the nature that we used to live in today, so. Anybody interested in making a motion?
Can I get a clarification? Are we making a motion for the whole handbook or just the?
It would be the whole content of the handbook. Again, this additional packet this evening was to provide last minute adjustments following the legal council review of the handbook. So it would be, it would be the whole handbook, would be of his most recent updates that we've been through.
Okay. And I would make a motion to approve the Office Clerk on Aid Support Staff Employee Handbook, with the change brought forward to us.
Okay, motion is second to approve the Office Clerk on Aid Support Staff Employee Handbook, including the revisions that were presented to us tonight. For second.
I agree.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Both. Okay, next we'll move on to approval of the Honeywell service contract.
Dan, I don't know if you want to speak a little bit about it. I mean, I think it's just a renewal of the existing Honeywell contract that we've got. I think that saved us a little money on the deal.
Yeah, basically, I don't, I'll familiar you guys, I was Honeywell. There are software and they have controllers in each building that turn anything from our HVAC systems on to the lighting at the high school. And what this does, this service contract here is for a technician, two days a week. He comes in and mostly works on the front-end stuff, programming issues, software issues, things like that. Basically, this was a three-year contract I was signed in 2009. This is another three-year contract and they've agreed to hold a price on the service part of this. The other half to this contract is our service net. They notify us if things are haywire in our buildings, if our freezers go down, things like that on the weekend. And that part of it, we'll be able to monitor closer with our new panels that are coming in. Those panels aren't in yet. We may be able to do away with that part of this contract. That's what we've kind of been working on the last month and a half here. Basically, they've agreed to take the service net part, which is about $9,000. They're going to cut that in half, figuring that we may not need it by the end of the school year, but I mean, we'll still need certain parts of it, but we won't need the majority of it. We'll be doing our own monitoring behind it. Basically, like I say, this gives us two days with a tech per month. Technician actually graduated from Lincoln here, so he's got some ties to the area. We, I mean, he gives us more than two days a month, actually. We're able to call him on weekends and things like that. And if he's anywhere near internet, he can go on and patch some of our software issues. Say, air conditioning, condensate coil doesn't fire up. He can, he can jumpstart that from his computer.
So this, what's the total cost?
The total cost is 42,889.58.
Did you do that?
In the last three years, it was 47,178.83. So that's a savings of 4289.25. And that's due to our service net ops, which is our monitoring system. We're able to negotiate that down. I'm envisioning next year, we may not need that at all and we'll be able to do away with the other 4,300, basically of that part of it.
So there are 72 days of service included in that?
Yep, exactly.
And software and information.
Basically, when he comes in, he's not, he's not doing things that our heating technician does. He's working on programming issues, things like that. The last electrical storm, for instance, wiped out all the programming for Lincoln. If you guys noticed, it was pretty warm in there for our startup initially. It wiped out all of our programming there. So our new panels should help. A lot of the stuff, a lot of the old panels don't have the proper software in. Once they're all installed and functioning properly, I think a lot of our problems go away too on that end, but. So basically, this is another three-year contract if you approve it. The pricing on the technician part, they actually held to 2009 pricing for us. So I was pretty happy with that. Any questions?
So our main controllers are not under, as I was saying, under backup or protected power?
Yeah, they're under protective power also. We're actually going through, we're going to try to virtualize our servers. Right now at the high school, we have three servers that do them and then we back those up. Eventually, we'll have them virtualized and then we'll have, you know, our backup server over here at East Junior High for that. So right now, the electrical storm, for instance, for some odd reason, it just comes through and wipes out the program. So if we go back in and it wasn't actually like a lightning strike or a power surge or anything that did that, it just, it's one of those things that's, Honeywell can't explain it. I guess they've been dealing with it for years and it's just hopefully our new software and our monitoring system will take care of some of that, but.
It's just the static.
Exactly. Yeah, right. It seems like on, you know, it's happened three times since I've been over there. It seems like when we have an electrical storm combined with wind, we have problems. And I don't know, each one of our units and things like that have a contactor that reports to a main panel that reports to the software and somewhere in there, there's a, there's a disconnection, basically.
We've got a lot of that wind.
Mm-hmm. So any questions other than that?
We're just making a motion.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
I would make a motion to approve the Honeywell service contract that was granted.
Second. Okay, motion is second to approve the Honeywell service contract. That was in the amount of 42,889.58. 58 cents. Thank you. Is that an annual amount in it?
That's annually.
Okay, annually? Can you please have a little call on the screen?
Did you want that amount in the motion?
Yes.
Yes, please.
All right. Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mrs. Rayle?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Good morning. Next we have.
What I want to comment is, when they bring the stuff on, we're in business services committee, I'd like to thank the people that are trying to help us save budget money by holding the prices. We've had multiple vendors do that for us now over the past contract changes for, let's see, the last three or four different contracts come through business services. So just relay that information to them and we appreciate that, holding the prices for us.
Thanks, John. Okay, next we have action to approve a resolution to amend the Wisconsin Rapids Flexible Benefit Plan, attachment A. Dan.
What this, there's some changes that the federal government will make for flexible benefit plans. This resolution will authorize the district to make those changes and modify our benefit plan with our provider.
Is it a better plan or a weaker plan? Or this is part of the law?
They can contribute.
Oh, these changes, these changes are federal, changes made by the federal government.
But it's not, it's not taken away.
Well, it is a takeaway by the federal government.
It took away some of the flexibility of the plan, yes.
It involved the government, so, because it's staff-sured.
So what this resolution allows, allows the district, allows me to make these changes or authorize these changes to the plan with DDS.
Brings us into compliance right now.
Yes, it does.
I would move to approve the resolution to amend our Rapids Flexible Benefit Plan.
Okay, motion is second to approve the resolution to amend the Wisconsin Rapids Flexible Benefit Plan, is up mine in attachment A. All those in favor, please say aye.
I believe they used to be able to contribute up to five. And now it's only 10 if I've ever.
Plan here, things over in two years, give that at the end of one year and begin at next. Okay, next we have a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing of the amount that exceeds $10 million pursuant to section 67.12, there is A, one of those statutes that is our attachment A.
If you'll notice, the bids that we achieved today, US Bank has been a good partner with us on this over the last several years, and the bid was quite the bore of the master's. with us on this over the last several years, and the bid was quite the bore of the master's.
Almost paying you to take the money, aren't they? She could get a mortgage, they'd pay for this.
Just as, I was going to say, just as a review, we borrow the money so that we can make a real, because the state...
Yes, let me add to that. I mean, yeah, I'm...
Going to that? Sorry?
We have very, we have certain pension year where our revenues, our expenditures exceed our revenues, and starting at the middle of October now through December, when we, the second of December, when we get our first big aid payment, basically, we don't have any money. We don't have sufficient funds in the district, in our fund balance, to cover those, those expenditures. And so this money is used to cover the payrolls until we get our state income at other points through the year.
It's unfair to understand that when you're asking for $10 million, that it should be...
You need $10 million? Yes, but what they're hoping is that sometimes what happens is, if somebody, if you don't get a good bid, and you get somebody like, oh, I'm not going to use the word, you get, you get some other firm that, that only bids a high bid, rather than taking the full amount from that company, you can offset it with a bid from their department. And, and I do appreciate Bear's bid, because there was one time where they were the only bid we had. So I do appreciate them, them bidding. They've been, they've been good to the district also.
I would move the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $10 million pursuant to Section 67.12, parent eight, A1, Wisconsin statutes, attachment fee.
Do we need the provider and the interest rate in the motion, Dan?
That would be a good idea.
That is included in the...
Yeah, I hear it's fair.
It's all included in the resolution, but it'd be a good idea to include it.
The buyer is US Bank.
US Bank. At a rate of 0.437%.
4.
And what?
437%.
437%.
0.1437.
0.437.
That would have been difficult.
They might not have written it for us.
I will second with the corrections remaining in the form of...
Okay. There's a motion is second to approve temporary borrowing in the amount not to exceed $10 million pursuant to Section 67.12, parent eight, and A1, Wisconsin statutes, with US Bank, with the effective rate of 0.437%. Will you please have a little call, Brian?
Mrs. Rail?
Yes.
Mrs. Het?
Yes.
Mrs. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Cranes?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Bembel?
Yes.
Mrs. Medina?
Yes.
Okay, we move on to our calendar. It doesn't look like we have anything scheduled until September. Do you know the date of the consortium meeting? Seems to me it should be coming up. I know we're not posting it.
It's later than I expected. It's pretty late.
It's been so long, is it not?
I think so.
Maybe it's October, because we don't want it to crack over by May, no one else.
Well, I guess just...
It's back over 21st.
Okay, just keep in mind that there will be, there'll be another meeting scheduled in October for the consortium.
It's a month in.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have to remember this. I already went.
Pittsburgh?
No.
It's not within us.
I don't recall.
Or Michigan.
Where's it, where's it?
They know.
I'm guessing someone will contact us.
I hope so.
I'll go back in my notes.
Yeah, we can, we can. I can look for that.
All right, well, with that, then, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.